No, because it has to be rezoned first before they can even do the special use permit on the banks.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
But you're here about the rezoning relating to the triplex.
Yes, sir.
On, uh.
On Park.
Park Street. But it would affect, it would affect them as far as the rezoning.
Yes.
But they still would have to do a separate.
That's why I was requesting that they came, but I wasn't sure.
Right, but they still would have to do something separate relating to the special use permit. And that's, that hadn't gone for the council because it had been rezoned yet, and gone for the planning commission yet.
Okay.
Because that had been rezoned here. Go ahead and just tell us about your project.
Excuse me, what we're proposing is a, uh, a three unit apartment building. It's classified as a triplex. It is a conditioned envelope type building. Uh, if any of you all have seen what they call, uh, barn dominiums. It has that type of, uh, building structure. Sir.
What's happening, terminating this or?
The terminology I just used was barn dominium.
Barn dominiums.
Yes, if you've ever heard that.
No, sir.
Uh, but it's, it's basically a metal structured, uh, conditioned envelope building. Uh, we're proposing to, uh, use it for housing. And it will have all of the residential and handicap codes that are required by, uh, state law and all of the contracting boards.
It's not like shipping containers, is it? Is that like shipping containers? It's not, not.
I'm sorry, sir.
It's not like shipping containers, is it?
Oh, no, sir, no, sir, no. This is an actual, uh, build from the ground type building.
Okay.
Uh, if you are possibly familiar with the, uh, Masonic Lodge in Westellna on Coanza and Bonanza. I actually built that building, I think, three years ago, and it's the same type building. But we want to use it for residential purposes. Uh, we're proposing those three units, uh, complete, you know, residential type facility handicap accessible with all the requirements of the building codes.
And that, that address is where?
It's in the five hundred block of West Park.
And I assume that's not zoned for residential, for multi?
Currently it's all residential, but, uh, the, the only thing that would be allowed there is he's trying to go from R two to R three. Uh, for, between Park, Baringo, uh, Russell and Sam. Uh, that would affect additional project that, that he has witnesses hear about, and it would, it would affect his property. Currently, uh, right beyond that zone on Ladino, you have a quadplex right down by where it used to be coming north to Bone Shaker. And then you have, uh, right beyond, but this will be near West Side School, but it's more right up to here from my mother's house, uh, in that area.
Okay.
But duplexes allow, but triplexes, quadplexes are not.
I guess.
So he wanted a multifamily dwelling to be able to place there. Apartments are not allowed over there, et cetera. So we went for our, if it went to R three, they would be allowed to do so. That's what this petition is about.
Okay.
A rezoning. Rezoning for R two to R three. For that two block radius.
In that area?
The two blocks. Park, Baringo, Russell, and Sam, it's bordered right there.
Like a multi dwelling.
Yes, he, he wants me to put a multi dwelling. Right now you have duplexes over there, but you don't have, this would, this is three units in one.
Okay. Okay. We'd have to look at the pros and cons on that.
Well, and also, I think the legislature is moving towards things like that. I sent you all Act three thirteen?
Yes.
And Act three thirteen has allowed people now to put a, a second dwelling on a single family lot.
Yeah.
So is, Mr. Jordan speaking in favor, is anyone here speaking opposed? We're asking everyone please sign in, including the, the, the council and the administration, the media, and everyone who's present to please sign in, reflect that you're here. Mr. Jordan, I don't see anybody opposed to your petition. And it will be now submitted to the council for their further consideration.
No one has opposed, uh, this proposal.
No, sir.
Publicly, uh, been publicly published, uh?
Yes, it's been purpose, Mr. Bagley, it's been purpose, correct?
It was probably more than ten days before today.
Right. Correct. So there's no opposition to the, 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 the issue?
And that was, that was a false. But we're doing two, two in the spot.
Two in the spot, bro.
On the zoning.
Uh, you're doing, the, the zoning would include both, but she's, she still has to do a.
Right, I understand, but I thought it was two locations.
Yes, but it's all included in that radius, a two block.
It's one location or two locations?
It is a two block radius. There's a current petition now, and there's another one that's coming that has to need, that needs a, uh, special use permit. But until you get it zoned, you can't get special use permit.
And is it, uh, how many stories?
It's one.
One level?
Yes, but it's three units instead of two.
Three units, one level?
Yes.
Okay, and meets the fire code requirement?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir, it's, it's, the, the issue before you is not those issues, but whether you want to rezonate.
Yeah.
To, or three, to allow those type of structures.
Yeah.
That's the only question before you. That's the only thing that he's petitioning for. Because once, if you approve it, then he could just follow procedures and be able to just build the structure.
Right.
So that's the only question is on, on the two block radius, whether the city council, uh, will consider rezoning. And that's why he wanted a public hearing to get a public assessment.
Sure, sure.
And there's no, been no opposition, no one complaining?
None of the planning commission and.
No one said anything.
Okay, that's correct. So this is just public hearing, this is not the city council?
Yeah, right, I understand. All I'm asking you questions.
Yes, sir, no, no, I was just saying, there's been no opposition. Mr. Jordan, do you have anything else to do on this?
Uh, unless someone has some further questions.
As related to your second issue, if this council approves this at tonight's meeting or some other meeting, then, then the issue, she could do a special use, uh, permit request, and then, then that's how we get to that secondary structure. Well, if you said that, that, uh, this five forty-five, that we can conclude this, uh, public hearing and show that the only person that, uh, spoke was Mr. Jordan, and he spoke favorably, and that was not opposed. We now can move to the second public hearing.
Yeah, let's go.
We want to make sure that everyone has signed in. Uh, we're, we're moving to the next item, uh, which is the public hearing on the issue of annexation of islands within the corporate senate limits. Uh, I guess we'll start with Mr. Bagley. We want to make sure everyone has signed in. Mr. Bagley, you have a floor, then we will go orderly behind whomever wants to speak after Mr. Bagley.
Oh, thank y'all for, for your time. Uh, I'm here today to speak in favor of the island annexation. And, and I do so for several reasons. One, I, I think that on the surface, this is a, a matter of common sense. That you want your city whole. You don't want places in the city that are shaped like a donut with holes in it. Uh, beyond the common sense argument, I think that, number one, this is a matter of fundamental fairness to the existing residents of our city. These areas already receive some or all city services. It varies from place to place, whether it's some or all. But they are receiving these services and not paying the taxes, uh, that the rest of us as city residents pay to help fund these services. And, and so on, on that point, I, I think that that makes it all fair, because we're all living together. It's just that some of us, uh, have not been brought into the city limits and, and are paying only the county tax rates. The second thing is, those of us that choose to live in the city limits, most of us do so because we want some regulation. Uh, we don't want total freedom, uh, where people can put anything anywhere at any time. That's why we want zoning and codes. Uh, and, and so we made this choice because if we had wanted it the other way, we, you know, we would go back out in the country. I would go back out to the house I own that my ex-wife liked, that I never really did. Um, these islands facilitate a lowering of the quality of life in many cases for the city residents. Because people are able to, within these islands, in the middle of our neighborhoods, do things that damage the character of the neighborhood, the appearance, and likely will have, have adverse impact on our property values. And there's an example in my neighborhood right now, where in the island, we've got railroad and barred sized storage containers in the middle of our neighborhood. And when people drive by and look at buying houses, that's rather unsightly. The, the third thing is, is a, a matter to improve public safety. Because what you have now is the city and county do not have any kind of memorandum of understanding allowing for pursuit um, by the city police into the county, uh, in the event that there's a law enforcement issue. And while thankfully, the, the incident that, that I witnessed on body cams was not a violent situation, the island facilitated the city, city's law enforcement being defied because the argument was made, we're in the county, you can't do anything. So I, I, I think it's a matter of fundamental fairness. I think it's a matter of the quality of life that we seek in a city when we choose not to live in the country, and I think it's a matter that improves public safety. And I ask that when you cast your vote on this issue, that you do it in what's be, in the best interest of the existing residents of this city right now. Because that's who you're here to represent. And with that, unless y'all have some questions with me, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, in an orderly manner, who would like to go next? Is anyone? Please identify yourself.
My name's Chris Anderson, I live on Sunridge Drive, one of these islands.
Are you speaking for, yes, please?
I'm against.
Okay.
And I also speak for the Helen Country Club, against. Um, the common sense argument is not very common to me. There are places that have some city services. My house does not have all city services, and I don't think y'all can afford to put all city services to the house in a timely manner. I live on a road with about five houses. You'll have to put a sewer pumping station in that is very costly, and then you have to maintain it. There's already issues with city pumping stations around where sewers leaking through some of my property and onto the Helen Country Club. Um, the codes, there are probably some islands where the codes are not applicable, but there's a lot of islands that are very well maintained in this place, where we don't have things run amok. There's no safety issues, uh, no public safety. And the best I can tell, most of the islands, at least where I'm concerned with, or close to me, are close enough to the city government, law enforcement, that it's not a problem. They come out of the same place. The county sheriffs come out of the same place as the public offices, or the city's cops, so it's, it's not that big of an issue. And I just don't, I guess I understand it's a tax reason maybe, looking for additional tax revenue, but I think if you really weigh the issue on the number of tax dollars you're going to bring in versus what city services you need to supply, it, it's going to be a huge, huge deficit. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. We don't have a map available to us, I haven't seen. I, I'm not quite sure where you live on, uh.
On that street I told you. When I pointed it out, I tell you?
Yeah, I'm trying to place it. Where?
So it would be right inside this red line here, Sunridge Drive, right across from K F seven.
That's what I thought.
Yes, okay.
Are you in that, in, in this part here?
Yes, sir. Yes, well, yes, because if you go to the southern.
Where'd you get this map?
Mr. Wyland. Mr. Wyland. He's got a map, and Sunridge Drive is right here, and places the country clubs.
Yeah. Well, that drainage ditch that comes through the country club, how far is that?
Starts over here, it comes through all of these woods right here, and it comes through right here.
You, right through your property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with that.
There've been several letters written to the city about it.
Yeah, because that's bad drainage. Can I have this?
Yes, sir.
No.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's pause for a second.
Yes, sir.
Sir, would you identify yourself?
I'm Tracy Griffin, and I'm speaking for, against Tim Griffin Place, Griffin Valley. Tracy Griffin. Yes, I'm against the annex. As Chris said, we, uh, we're in dire need of officers. And we had to put up gates in our area of, of Griffin Valley. We don't have officers to make us feel safe. We have to depend on the sheriff's department across the road. My neighbors in Griffin Valley, they don't have city, uh, sewer. Some do, some don't. And our property up there, we utilize for, uh, wildlife, we don't have to get a permit to hunt. I enjoy deer hunting, our property. We enjoy fishing. And, uh, I just don't think it's a need to annex this property, therefore I'm against it. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wyland. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Anyone else would like to address the body? Yes, sir.
Okay, that, that was Griffin Valley, right?
Yes. Will you please introduce yourself and state what your for or against?
My name's West Horner.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I'm here representing Horner Realty Company, which owns some property that's in a cutout on, uh, forty-nine, forty-nine bypass. It's unimproved property. It's, uh, we tried to get it into the city limits back in the eighties. It, we were told no, we didn't want it. And, uh, I've got commerce that goes on it that I can't have with the, uh, city, in the city limits, so it's going to economically affect me. And, uh, we don't ask for city services. We don't use city services. And, uh, I just don't see the need in bringing that into the city limits. It just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me when I do live in the city and I do have the taxes, I have a business in the city, and I see exactly how city services can be administered. I just don't see the need to bring in more when we're all accepting less. And that, and that's not a, that's a condition of the community, it's not a slam on anybody, it's just the stating the obvious. And I would vigorously ask you to, uh, not do this.
So, Mr. Horner, what you're saying is, basically, it is not of the best interest of your business that we take that in?
It personally be detrimental to me, but it, it's, uh, certainly not in the best interest of Horner Realty Company at all.
Anyone else? Will you please state your name and whether you're for or against?
I'm Tony Malone, and I oppose this annex. It's, uh, my property is out there on the corner of forty-nine and Airport Road. Forty acres. It has been a farm. I actually have a letter here, y'all probably don't want to hear it, but I have it. A letter from another co-owner of that property that has been on that property since back in the thirties. That has always been a farm. We still farm that property. And we don't, we've just never wanted the city owner. And you're trying to force it on us and change our way of life, because it's always been a farming property. We don't use city sewer. We were grandfathered in because we allowed the city to run their sewer across our property and allowed us to grandfather in and keep our septic tanks and stuff. So no, we're not utilizing all the city stuff. As far as the water goes, hell, everybody probably better off without the water. And from what I understand, that part out there is on the Barton water anyhow. So if we need to be annexed, we should be annexed by Barton.
Are you on Barton water?
Pause, 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 pause. That's not even but a, a part of this. Airport Road is not even a part of what the city, it's just the island, it's part that's surrounded by the city, that's.
Well, supposedly I am surrounded, according to what they tell me. The corner of Airport Road and Highway forty-nine.
He's not on us, he's not on here.
No. It's not an island. The only parts that, that, that we're petitioning spoken about are the four areas, well, it's a little more.
Can I look at your map? Do you want me to come down?
I don't see it on mine, on this.
No, that's beyond the, that's beyond the scope of what they're discussing.
You're not.
If you look at the red areas.
Airport Road, that's Arkansas Highway one eighty-five.
Okay.
This, this is the island over by Rusty's.
Okay, so these are the only islands, and I'm not even in.
That's right.
Who tell you, y'all have a good day?
Yes, sir, you're not in it. Uh, who's next? Anyone else want to address the body? Please say, say your name and state what you're for or against, please.
Uh, my name is Doward Malden, and I am against.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to speak.
Mr. Malden, you have the floor.
Uh, my name is Doward Malden, and I'm against this annex or however y'all are calling it. Um, my, my concerns and my thoughts on this is what would my forty acres benefit from, from this? I'm on a gravel road. I'm by myself up there. Uh, my ditches need dug out, we need new, uh, cupboards put in. Tons of work up there, and I mean, all you could get would be with my tax dollars, maybe a little bit more. Am I going to be rewarded by all the things that I need? And how, how is y'all going to benefit and make that money off of just my love of the tax money? Now, this, another thing is I bought that place. Andrew just said that if you live in the city or you benefit by the city or whatever, you're in the city. But I bought that piece of property because it was in the county. For thirty-five years, and before my time, and the etatces is here, there has been game fowl or chickens on that property since my daddy had it in nineteen sixty-five. These chickens are shipped sometimes all over the world. Now, if this goes into the city, what do I do with my chickens? Where do they go?
He's talking.
How, how, how do, what, I mean, how do we, how do we fix this? I've got three hundred roosters, where do I put them? What's the, what's the, what's the rule on chickens in the city limits? Y'all don't know? Somebody ought to be able to tell me.
Yes, there's, there's a limit on the number, I had to go back and look at the statute, see what, how, how many there, but I know it's not three hundred.
Right, but my county property, I mean, I've been able to have my chickens.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please.
If I wanted to raise a hog out there, and which we have done before, if I wanted to get a cow or a horse or whatever, I mean, that's what I bought that property for. It was in the county, and I was going to be there the rest of my life, and that's where I wanted to live. So who's going to come out and tell me after thirty-five years that I can't do this, I'm a piece of property I paid for? And I've changed because somebody, and I don't know who, and I don't know why, decided we need to take these pieces of property and put them in the city. Who come up with this and, and why? Where does it benefit?
Arkansas, Mr. Lee came up with it, and when we consolidated, they suggested we do it, uh, back in two thousand and five, December thirtieth. When they met with us in November the year before, uh, right before.
Mr. Riley, I appreciate that, that's been twenty years ago.
I understand, but you asked who came up with it?
Okay.
Mr. Lee advised about that, and it's been an issue that, that, uh, has never been taken up. It wasn't taken up before then because you had two different cities, so it never was an island. Since you consolidated, it became an island. Uh, so between the area that you're discussing, uh.
I'm outside for more than, no, I'm on the outside.
Side of Door Street, right?
Uh, yeah, I'm on the outside of the bypass.
Right.
There's my, my line on the backside is pretty much, there's one little strip of houses maybe that is city limits, and then it's county. There's, on the other side, there's a little piece of city limits, maybe one or two houses, and then it's county again, pretty much all the way around me. But, I mean, what, 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 what does this benefit me if y'all do this? What do I get?
The city council has determined they have to tell you exactly what services they're going to provide if they do it. This is a public hearing, uh, to give people the right to, to express whether they're for it or against it. Uh, there has not been an ordinance that's been passed by the council or any of that. Uh, that was a request, uh, for a public hearing, and that's how we got here.
Well, I thank y'all for your time. I think y'all's time could be used on other things. I think this is a total waste of time, and I appreciate y'all. And if there's anything y'all need to speak to me about, or get with me, I, I can meet with any or whatever, but I am totally against this.
How long have you owned the property?
Thirty-five years I have owned this piece of property. And it's been, it's an old pillar hill, Mike Etatces and the Etatces.
I think I know where you're talking about.
Right. Where the roosters used to be in the bottom of the valley, on the forty acres right behind that, our way to Homer King's back there. I see no way, I mean, even if I wanted to have an old car in my yard, or the things that I have, you can't have in the city. I mean, how do you change everything I've done for thirty-five years?
Well.
I'm fifty, I'm fifty-eight years old.
Here's the, the one thing about it, even without annexing this, the city can, at this point right now, over all of these islands, just so y'all know, city has a five mile radius to, to impose regulation if they, if they want to. So at this point, if the city wanted to, this is FYI, city could just say, well, we're going to put you in a zoning, whether we, whether we, uh, annex you or not, just, just for your information. That's state law.
Well, thank y'all for your time.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Please, please introduce yourself.
Kaylin Griffin, I own two properties in Griffin Valley, um, three oh nine and three eleven are both my properties. My daughter has a horse, we also keep some sheep, and sometimes there's some donkeys running around in there. Um, it is fenced in, but it is our, you know, that's kind of our way of life, what we like to do up there. And so we just oppose being annexed in to the city. We bought the property, we assumed whenever we bought it, it was in the county, we thought it was in the county. Um, I think our house does have city sewer, or maybe, I know we don't have a septic tank, like the, there's a couple houses in the valley that do have septic tanks, but we don't. Um, but we just oppose it, we don't understand why we will, or why the city council wants to annex these properties into the city. And we don't see anything that's going on right now, why we shouldn't just be left in the county, and that's kind of where we want to be, so we just oppose the motion. And, um, yeah, that's.
You, you have, you have, uh, city sewer, but there are houses out there that don't have.
That's correct.
So if we take it in, we'd have to provide that to them, wouldn't we?
Yes, and in twenty sixteen, when I purchased my home there, we paid to repay portions of the road because it's not maintained by the county. And, um, yeah, we deal with all of the, the ditches there, we clear them out, we keep it manicured, we pay for all the landscaping out there, m- mowing of the yards. We have two fences that are put up, one on Newman Drive and one on coming off the bypass. We don't get any help from the city on, on those. We don't get any help from the city on on those financial burdens that we don't mind having because it's our property and that's, we want it to look nice and we want to maintain it and keep it up. But also, you know, if we get annexed into the city, whose duties are all those, where do those lie at that point? So we oppose the annexation.
Is anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. If there's no one else that would like to speak, uh I believe this concludes the public hearing. The time is now, I'm correct, what time is it officially?
Six oh eight.
Six oh eight? Time? Six oh eight. Uh Mr. Mayor, you've conducted two public hearings. At this point, we're now under your uh leadership relating to fundamentals of city business.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started, I'd certainly announce to the audience that there's no audience, ordinance or any action anticipated by the city council on this issue tonight.